All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for October 24th, 2024. Right now, we have Roger Marcey and Alec Rich and myself. And Denise, I believe, is on her way, so she should be here shortly. Kevin could not make it tonight due to a work issue. So as usual, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Even though Peter's not here, where's Peter?
Yeah, there is. My pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, into republic which stands on the ground indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we have a shortened schedule tonight. There's a public hearing at 6:15. I think we can get through everything before then. So right off the bat, we have an appointment of full-time office administrator in the Board of Health Department.
All right, Chris is coming up. We introduce you to Nancy Velkorba.
Oh, you said it right.
Where's our podium?
They moved it for the elections.
Okay. This is a fancy podium for us. All right, so we'd like to welcome Nancy. We're very excited to have Nancy. She's got a great background. Worked in a hospital setting for 23 years, which we feel will be a strong, make her a strong asset for our office. So we're super excited. And hopefully, we have, we're very close in age, so hopefully we get to work full-time careers together and retire together someday.
That works.
All right, anybody have any questions?
Nancy, are you happy to be here?
I am, I am. I'm a little nervous, I'm not going to lie.
Don't be nervous.
I'm excited. I'm excited for the opportunity, definitely.
Where are you coming from?
Stewart Medical Group.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah. Now, it's, as of October 30th, it's going to be Revere Medical or something. They're rebranding everything and...
Which facility is Stewart with?
Yeah.
She was at Morton.
At Morton?
At Morton.
Okay. Yeah, Stewart everywhere.
Everywhere, everywhere. It's chaos right now, but...
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
And, whoa, let's vote first.
Motion.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marcey.
I make a motion that we accept the appointment of Nancy Velkorba Olney as a full-time office administrator in the Board of Health Department.
Second. Motion of the second, all in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, next up, we have the appointment of the full-time town clerk. I think we did this before, but the date just changed.
So I just wanted you to confirm the appointment of Jill Seppa effective November 6th, 2024.
So do we, we don't make a motion for that, do we?
Yeah, because when we send it into the state, they want to see...
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marcey.
I make a motion that we accept the appointment of Jill Seppa as the full-time town clerk effective November 6th, 2024.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Third, in the appointments, we have an appointment of a Select Board representative for the Planning Board in regard to the MBTA zoning bylaw. I, you know, initially, I wasn't sure about this, but I've served on the Planning Board. I was chair before, and I think I'd be able to help. Hopefully, I can help. So I'm happy to put my name in the hat of the ring if nobody else wants to.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marcey.
I would like us to wait till we have a full board here, so we could get everyone's opinion on that. And I think it's important that everybody have a say in who sits on that.
I agree. Okay, so, let me, tell me the table, sorry, we can just...
Yeah.
Okay. All right, as for the minutes, we have minutes. Everybody look those over.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marcey.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the September 26th, 2024, Select Board meeting.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, excellent. So we're still early for the public hearing. What else do we have here?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marcey.
I have a few announcements, if you don't mind.
Absolutely, go ahead.
So I'd like to make an announcement for the Charlie Halloween Parade that is this Sunday, 10/27, October 27th, starting at noon. Might also like to make an announcement of the VFW Spooktacular Halloween Hayride and Haunted House this Friday and Saturday, the 25th and 26th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. We also have the Veterans Day Volleyball Game fundraiser for the...
Volleyball boosters.
For the volleyball boosters at the high school, Saturday, November 9th, from 10:00 to 12:00. We have Holiday Craft Fair, November 16th, at the Norton High School. We have the Norton Veterans Appreciation Luncheon at the VFW Post 804-9, Wednesday, November 13th, 2024, at noon. We also have the Norton Veterans Day Parade, Monday, November 11th, starting at 10:00 p.m. at the high school.
10:00 a.m.
I'm sorry, to say PM. That would be a late parade. So that'd be 10:00 a.m. We also have the Norton Holiday Toy Drive, sponsored by the Norton High School Math Honors Society, Norton Police Department, and the Norton Fire Department, and the C2 Foundation in memory of Tommy Peterson, accepting donations in Savay. The 23rd of November drop-off is at Norton Senior Center, 55, the old Norton Senior Center, 55 West Main Street, 9:30 to 12:30, and Bog Iron Brewing, 2:30 to 6:00 p.m. We also have, the Trinitarian Congregational Church is having a fundraiser for the clock face, I'm sorry, rehabilitation, I believe it is. Chance to, this is your chance to take part in an effort to restore the clock face, so that they may shine bright again for many more generations. Their goal is $18,000 in donations by November 20th. And I just wanted to also just remind folks that they can do, early voting is available. You can go to the town website, there's always, almost every day, that you can come and do early voting. Thank you.
Take a question, Mr. Marcey. Moving along, before this public hearing, we have discussion and our vote to write off uncollected ambulance bills.
So every year, I come here and have you guys vote to write off uncollected ambulance bills. So, you know, basically, what happens is, there's a collection company, if they can't get the ambulance bills, I believe it's a seven-year, they can go for seven years to try to get that, and then it comes to a point where they can't, legally, they can't actually go after them anymore. So we do this around this time of year, because it helps for the auditors if we get this out of the books. So I'm looking for you to write off for this year, the sum of $212,316.97. And just, I know it sounds like a big number, but the, the collection agency last year collected $65,000 of stuff that, you know, basically went through the proper channels, as far as billing company wasn't able to be collected. So they do a good job actually collecting that. They charge us 3%. So the $65,000, the charge to us was like $1,900, so it's actually a good, good service. They don't do any precious stuff, but when it gets to a certain point, they just have to be written off, because they can't collect it anymore.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marcey.
Is this number higher or lower than any other year, or does it, is it about average for what you're only trying to get done?
Why do you ask that? FY '22, it was $154,000. FY '23 was $152,000. FY '24, it was $204,000. So it's around, again, the more we collect, unfortunately, sometimes, you know, the more that gets uncollected. But again, this is like a seven-year look back, so you have to kind of look back. This is stuff that's been written off from seven years ago.
Anyone else? Take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marcey.
I make a motion that we write off the uncollected ambulance bills as described by Deputy Fire Chief Wilson.
Second. Okay, motion of the second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Devin. Did we have anything, anything not reasonably anticipated within 48 hours?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marcey.
I do have something not anticipated within the last 48. When I was picking up my packet today, there was a discussion going on and about the unused material that's in the old town hall, whether it be file cabinets, or chairs, or tables, or anything. And I would like us to put that all into, if we could, is it possible for us to put that into surplus, just make a general, whatever's left in the town hall, we try to sell it, if nobody's going to use it in the new town hall?
Yeah, I'm sure we can do that. I think we have to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, just to officially market surplus. Right, is that correct?
Well, you could do it now, but you could reaffirm it at the next meeting on an agenda, but as, as Roger said, it's kind of what I anticipate.
I just walked into the office to pick up my packet, and there was a discussion about it, and I'm saying, why don't we just put all this stuff into surplus, instead of having people move it back and forth and just sell off what we can, instead of getting what we can out of the equipment that's in the old town hall, as opposed to having to move it around.
Mr. Chair. So what I've done, all departments, all departments have until tomorrow at 12:30 to take out anything that they feel they need. And I emailed everyone today, because people had gotten the marked stuff that they wanted to take. And so I emailed all the departments in town and told them they have until 12:30 to get that out of there. I've gone around taking pictures of what's in every room, and we'll put them on GovDales and sell them.
Okay.
Whatever's left.
So do we, do we find out who has taken the toilet paper and all that stuff?
We got our labels back.
Okay, good. I think it might be a good idea to, to ask any other town departments, you know, highway or, well, senior standard probably doesn't mean anything now, but any other departments that might be...
Right, that's what I mean when I say that. It's the other departments, not...
Okay.
Because we're not bringing in any furniture over here, so it's water, store, schools, police, fire.
Through you, Steve. What's that? I was just going to say, since there's no urgency, maybe we should wait for a file list from Mike, once they've collected what's left, and then declare it based on the list that get provided.
Yeah, our next, our next meeting is the 7th, and I think, did you mention when the demolition might happen? It wasn't during the meeting, this was, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it can't happen until probably the following week, because the elec, it's going to be after the election, so...
It's going to have to be stored someplace until it goes to auction.
That's, that's, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to incur a storage cost if we're just going to...
I don't think we're going to be able to auction it in a week.
What we figured, anything that we don't, we can bring over to the old senior center and store it in there.
Yeah.
Okay. As long as there's no extra cost, you know, storage containers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, no, I'm fine waiting till next time.
Right.
Yeah, put it in here. Okay, yeah, that's a good, that's a good point, Denise. Okay. Wait, 6:15 yet? Yep. 6:17. I don't see the applicant here, so I'm going to slowly say that I approve the warrants as written.
Could they be on the Zoom?
Is he on the Zoom? No, I don't think so.
Are they having, is the representation going to be here?
He was supposed to be here, yeah.
Just under Town Manager's report, I can just say one thing. You know, a town meeting, we have the MBTA zoning, and I want to thank the Planning Board and their staff, they put a lot of time into it. If you're not agreeing with them, that's fine, but they really have put a lot of time into it, a lot of work, and I thank them for all the time they put into it, even though the people have different opinions, that's fine, but please respect the work that they, that they put into it.
So that's what I said. All right, does anyone have any other announcements? Well, Jim's trying to find out where they...
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rich.
I know Chris has already left, but I'd like to make note and thank him for, since, since the retirement in his department, he's been doing everything single-handedly, and he's been running around like crazy. So I wish he was here, we should have said it before he left, but I just want to thank him for covering, since the retirement, it's, he's had his hands full.
And we can, we can also overthink it, people. I thank the interim town clerk for, for helping with the town meeting, because that wasn't part of what she was supposed to do, so I think that was fantastic that she was able to do that. And all of the boards for their selfless service to this town, and anything else we can say while we're waiting?
If I could, just when you were talking about Chris and his department, I also want to thank Chris and Nick for all the work they've done in this transition, moving from the old town hall to this, and getting things working in here, as far as the key fobs. And it was interesting, we had James translate, because we got our key fobs, and they were going to send them back, because they're in Spanish.
They're all in Spanish.
And it turns out, the cards that we got were originally for the airport in Bogota, Colombia.
That would explain. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marcey.
I do have a question under, I'm not sure where this falls under, but I'm just curious about the building itself, when the building is going to be finished with all of the audio visual equipment, so Shane doesn't have to come in here and set up like we're over in the Housing Authority building every day.
That's not on the agenda.
I know, I'm just, I'm for Shane 48 hours. I expected to walk in here and see it done.
I told them last Tuesday, I said, I don't care if you give me a date of February, just give me a date when it's going to be done. You know, that's, it's frustrating.
So are they really working, or is it just like the, I mean, they're up there, they have to have been tested?
They, it does work, because I've seen them showing things on that wall from the projectors.
Okay.
So I don't know what else they're waiting for.
And is that the contractor, or is that a subcontractor that's doing that, or is it...
For the AVs, the sub, I believe, right?
Just, I guess, who's, who's the guy you got to call?
Okay, we're going to wait for Jen to see if she comes back with the applicants. I'm actually excited about this one, it's, it's a very, very good idea. Anybody have any jokes in the meantime, or...
Anything that's, anybody that's trying to move into that piece of property, I'm excited about.
Yeah, so I can give a quick background. About six months ago, I was in town hall when, when this gentleman approached and was asking about, you know, potentially what he needed to do to get this business going. So I'm kind of excited about it, it's indoor, indoor golf, so I love golf. Let's see. We were going to break a record tonight with time.
Can we...
Can we just move all that you can, yeah?
Yeah, well, we have nothing left. The next...
I'm just saying, can we just move this to the next meeting? Do they need, did they need some action on this before the next meeting, I guess, by question?
Because it was noticed, we, we need to open, open the public hearing. We can continue it? So we can, okay, so I guess we can open the public hearing on the application of Bogies LLC, manager Jonathan Barnes, for a, I'm going to talk slowly, for a new Section 12 General On Premises License to Expose, Keep for Sale, and to Sell Wines and Malt Beverages to be Drunk on the Premises at 175 Mansfield Avenue, Suite 3, Norton, Mass. 02766.
Second.
Okay. So he's getting them zoom. Oh, all in favor, go to the meeting.
Aye.
Aye.
So this is going in the plaza, over next to the liquor store.
Yep.
So my, my understanding, and I can, I can, he'll explain it better, but my understanding, it's a, it's a virtual golf, indoor virtual golf, and they want to be able to have beer and wine be sold there as well.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marcey.
Do we know how many more of these licenses are available in the town, if this one is approved?
That is a, that is a great question, and I'm glad Jen's here for that.
I believe there's at least two left after this one, for just beer and wine on premise.
Mr. Chair. Jen, have all the apartments, heads signed off, police, fire, everybody, go to health?
Yes, I believe the only one left that technically wasn't approved on there was the police department pending civil fingerprinting, but I believe they already did that, and he had it approved without stipulation.
So if we finalize it, the motion will be made?
Contention upon final, say, final sign off?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
So as we all slowly flip through this pile of papers.
Were they, is it, is it Jen, is it the owner who's going to be on?
Yes.
Okay. I'm excited for you to meet him, he's very enthusiastic, very energetic, so that's why I was kind of hoping he'd be on.
Is somebody logging into this room?
He's trying to now, supposedly.
Is one of, is one of us logging in?
Oh, we're on over here and over here, yeah.
You can't see, you're behind the...
Gotcha.
I told you, it's going to be a riveting night tonight. So does anybody have any questions on the application, or how is that?
Was he, he was notified that we were going to have this meeting tonight, and we were going to be discussing it?
Yes, because he had to send out the affirmative notification.
Yeah. Does any, anyone in the audience have anything to say on the public hearing here? Hoping to kill some time. Well, in all fairness, usually, we, we start these public hearings a little bit late, so it's only 10 minutes past when we're supposed to be here, so... Okay. Is he logging out? Because if not, we're just going to, we're going to, we're going to have to table it. This reminds me of land. I'd rather have people in person.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marcey.
Is there something that needs to be done at that facility? Will they, will this keep them from opening if, if we put this to our next meeting?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rich.
From what I saw, there are some improvements that are going to be done on both the landlord's part and the tenants, they have to do a breakdown for it. So if I had to guess, you know, being in this landlord business, with what they have to do, I think November 7th is fine.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marcey.
I'm going to wait for you to ask for a motion to move this to our next meeting.
Okay, give me one minute, and I'll probably ask for that motion. Is that... I'm personally okay with that. Are you okay if he's on speakerphone?
It's fine.
Or make sure everybody hears it.
We can't see that, we can't see him there.
That's true, yeah, just if you put it at the microphone.
Oh, you're on here.
I apologize for this. Very nice to talk to you, only I would have been there, I promise.
That's okay. Do you want to tell us a little bit about the business and what you're looking for?
Yeah, I'm looking to open up an indoor golf facility. It's called Bogies. An indoor golf facility is essentially, it's a virtual space that you rent out, essentially about 30 feet long by 20 feet, no, 15 feet wide, by the hour, and when you come, you bring your golf clubs, and essentially, we, we load up actual golf courses, information topographically, and when you, you take a full golf swing with inside the bay, again, it's a, it's basically a box, it's completely contained. It's a projector behind, again, 20 feet deep, so you stand about 10 feet in, the projector sits above you, it picks up the ball where you put it, so when you, when you hit the ball, it basically goes into a screen, much like a, like a movie screen, a thick canvas, if you will. And then, once it hits a screen, the cameras and the computer simulate the actual golf course, the ball flight, and spin, and then you essentially play the game of golf within a, within a 15 by 20 by 10 cube.
Okay, excellent. And as far as the liquor license, what are you, what are you looking for there, the beer and wine license?
Really, I'm just looking to, let me take you off speaker, please. I'm going to take you off, excuse me. All right. Basically, it's, I'm looking just to supplement the entertaining value, as in with any golf course, so I would only, I'd be looking to serve beer and wine and malt beverages, it's my understanding that there's no full liquor licenses. Personally, I only want one, because then I could serve mixed cocktails and like, but like vodka seltzer in a can. There's never been my intention to ever be a bar or a bartender, because I don't want to mix drinks, I actually don't want to have the responsibility of, I guess, hard liquor, I guess. So all I'm looking for is a beer and wine license that I can serve, domestic beers and maybe some craft beers, and some wine, and hard seltzer, maybe?
Okay, take you...
And then, obviously, with a complement of non-alcoholic beverages, of course.
Okay, do we have any questions from the board? Mr. Chair. Mr. Rich.
Jonathan, do you have any other existing locations?
No, this is my first search.
Okay. I know from personal experience, I think it would be a great addition to the town, myself. We, we've done this for the, at Baseball Boosters, had tournaments in the winter town to raise funds, and it's been, they've been actually really cool, the kids love it, rather than just adults on, on the golf course on a Saturday.
It's not about, yeah, thank you, thank you, that's my vision. I...
I, I know that like Norman High School gets to play at TBC, I know because they used to play in high school, but I really want to reach out to the community, especially with kids, it's, you know, on my not, on my non, like, busy hours, so I don't know. That's my idea, is to become a fixture amongst the community. I know that, that Wheaton doesn't have a golf team, but there's a lot of kids that like want to have fun, but it's a contained and safe space, so I don't know, what can I tell you? How much fun do you get to have that's not a bar in Norton?
I think teaming up with the, the youth sports programs, those are great, great fundraisers that we've, we've done before for baseball and pretty soon volleyball. We are engaged in volleyball now.
So during, during the summer, there's a lot of dead time for me, and I open up early around 11 or 12. So to, to host a couple of hours for kids to come in and try and take a swing, I mean, I'm really looking forward to that. I don't know what else to say.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Anyone else with questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marson.
Mr. Barnes, could you just explain a little bit of how you're going to be selling the beer and wine in your facility? Will it be at like a bar that people walk up to? Do you have a server come out to them? How is that gonna work?
So when you walk through the doors, there's gonna be a front desk greeting area and that is where I wish to station myself all the time. Behind that, I wish to put basically what you see when you go into any, any golf pro shops or what you would call a clubhouse. I can't classify what I do as a club, but when you walk into a golf clubhouse, they often have these giant front-facing glass coolers. They're about seven feet tall by three feet wide and usually about three feet deep. And that's all the product I really think that I need to carry. And so I want it behind me in my front desk area. And then in, as you face the front of the building, there are two locked-off office spaces which I intend to use as my storage area for any alcohol. Also, because I want to be in the front of the building and greet people as they walk through the door, that's why I want to put the cooler in the front. But realistically, the two rooms in the back, there'll be this quote, quote, bar-type area, as in it's a window, like a snapshot. You know, like you go to a high school football game and there's a snapshot, like that. So there's no seating, there's no bar, there's no seating at a bar, you don't sit at a bar. There's gonna be a bunch of dead space now and I'm gonna fill it up with a couple of lounge-like couches, two high tops and one lower table in case anybody maybe physically disabled could still enjoy the event.
The only thing, other thing I'd like to say is thank you for considering Norton for this new venture of yours. We appreciate any business, especially in that particular area in town. So thank you for doing that. And are you gonna have any employees?
It's gonna be amazing. If you improve it, it's gonna be great.
And I'm sure all of your employees will be trained accordingly for any alcohol and beer sales.
Anything else?
Yes, and honestly, having to have gone through this, there is some public trust that I get to have with the general public. Is that correct? That I don't have to be so fearful that people are gonna come in and attack me, right?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
You have to go out here.
Golf clubs.
You know, there's a liquor store next door. I'm just like, I imagine, I'm not a cash business. Again, I, I don't want to talk.
I think you'll be fine. So, so without any other questions from the board, is there anybody in the audience with a question? Okay.
It's not a bar, there's no leaving, all, everything's on premises. It's, you, the establishment is not intended for you to come in and hang out and have a beer. I, I want to make that clear. Okay? It's not a bar, it is an entertainment venue. And it's, it's so happen that when you're not paying for your time, that you shouldn't be mulling around, okay? Is that fair?
That makes sense. All right, I just want to see.
People don't want to do that. There's bars next door and a liquor store, so.
So Jonathan, before you came on, I don't know if you can, before you came on, I had said that I, I think I met you six months ago when you first came in with the idea and I was, I think I was on board back then, so I am, I am 100% for this. I think it's, it's gonna be great for the community, it's gonna be great for that area. So with that, I'll, I'll take a motion if there's a motion. Oh, we have to.
Close the public.
Close the public, there's no comment? Okay. So I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marson.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing for the application of Bogies LLC for their beer and wine license.
You read my mind.
Sorry.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marson.
I make a motion that we grant a beer and wine license under Section 12 general on-premise license to keep for sale and to sell wines and malt beverages to be drunk on premises to Bogies LLC at 175 Mansfield Avenue.
Second.
Is that stipulating that all, we had all the sign offs?
Ah, yes.
Yes, provided we have all departments have signed off.
Okay. All, all, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, congratulations, Jonathan, and thank you so much for coming to our town.
My gosh. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for all your help, seriously. Start, and we're only kind of getting started and really I do appreciate your patience with me certainly. And yes, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Have a wonderful evening and a great day as well.
He's a great guy. Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll take another motion.
Motion to close the meeting?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.